Thank you. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Mr. Bracken, second, Mr. Kincaid, all in favor?
Ms. Brown?
Ms. Brown? So we have one board member that's zooming in with this meeting. So is Leah available? Can she hear us?
Yes, I can. Sorry, couldn't unmute.
Approval of the agenda. Hopefully she'll... Leah, are you in?
I am.
Okay, so she votes yes for the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. So first thing on our agenda is board recognition, an exciting part of our honor here on the Board of Education. And I'd like to start off with Mr. Kincaid.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. It's truly my honor and privilege to read this resolution in recognizing music in our schools month. So I'll get started with that. Whereas the month of March has been designated as National Music in Our Schools Month, whereas our music educators dedicate themselves to bringing music into the lives of students every day. They are committed to ensuring that our district provides students with a well-rounded education, a critical tool for social and emotional well-being, an opportunity to work to their full potential, life skills needed to make decisions and juggle multiple tasks, months of practice and rehearsals, and the process of learning that takes place in the music classroom, whether virtual or distant in person. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Spencerport Central School District thanks the music and band educators for dedicating themselves to reaching all students with wonderful music experiences, and be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Spencerport Central School District hereby acknowledges with deepest appreciation the passion and commitment our music educators exhibit on a regular basis to provide a quality music education for the Spencerport School community. Adopted this day, March 8, 2022. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So at this point, I would like to invite our Burnaby community up. And Mr. Kayaza, please join us along with the wonderful, wonderful people that you brought along with you.
Hi, everybody. So we're gonna do one of these things where we don't know which direction to look. Sometimes we're gonna look at this way at the Board of Education. We sit here tonight and sometimes we'll go down and say hi to everyone. But ultimately, and actually, if you wouldn't mind, let's just join me in...
Oh, we're coming down.
Oh, you're gonna come down?
We're coming down.
Come down! So first of all, as the principal of Burnaby, I put some of this on the stage. The Board of Education and the district were taking just a moment to throw a literal spotlight on some of the work that our Burnaby Learning Community has done with regards to culturally responsive and sustaining. What we've learned over the course of the past few years in working with this amazing group of students and with their families, and many, many others who couldn't be here today, was how important it is to ensure that as we engage in this work, we're providing a platform and an opportunity for our students and their families to have a voice in this work because it's so important that as a community, we grow together and that their voices are represented. So I will tell you that this presentation might be an earlier version, so you might get a little bit less than we had done in our final version. That's okay because we'll give everyone an opportunity to say something tonight that we wouldn't have ordered earlier. You guys are running the talk in front of this whole big group of people? No, probably not, but that's okay. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to start, and I think I know how to click on that video. And Bobby, if you could give me one minute, if you could click on it. Essentially, what this video is gonna show you is, over the course of the past few years, we started working more and more with our students and families on that little voice piece. We really wanted to make sure that as we were engaging and exploring CRSE, that it became more than just that celebration of Martin Luther King Day. It became more than just that celebration of Black History Month. And although the work that we're doing, the work that you'll see has been specific over the course of the last month of Black History Month, it's really become much more encompassing. We're gonna talk a little bit about the work that we're doing right now with Women's History Month. And we're also gonna talk a little bit about how we celebrate and support this Hispanic heritage. So this video will give a quick snapshot of some of the work that we've done.
It was at the beginning of the school year, or probably in the time of time, where the internet, everything went all black, right? Everybody posted like this all-black, right? And so my daughter, who goes to East Ridge, she was under the counter, and she liked them all-black, right? So Eric's father was like, "You can't do that." And she, you know, she couldn't understand. And he said, "You have to understand..." He calls him student, you know, "He's coming from a different, a different experience." You know, what he has a lot of white people who support him. He has a lot of white friends. So if you do this, that might make them feel uncomfortable with him. And we had to tell her, you know, being a black man, being a black student, being a black boy, it hits different from anything else, even being a black girl. So we didn't want to put pressure on him from his friends, from his teachers, from, you know, anyone that may know that he's coming from the city to come here. And, you know, so we, we didn't put the black out, right? However, he, this does represent him. Police brutality does represent him. Inequality for black men does represent my son. And, you know, injustice, you know, violence against him represents him. So he, at some point, has to stand for who he is, but also not make his environment uncomfortable.
I wanted to say something about, like, me being kind of Hispanic and black. I usually get mistaken for just being black. Like, people don't see the side of me. And sometimes I kind of, I kind of feel a small bit offended because I, like, there's some Spanish music I listen to. There's some, like, the music is a big part of me because I only usually listen to, like, rap music or R&B. But then when I'm at home, I listen to Spanish music, or a car ride, or a trip, or something. And people only see me as naked dead, naked dead, black, in this own cross. So it's just hard to kind of only show one side of me, one on one face, and the other side of me, one on another.
About Ruby Bridges. And I would hear how brave she was on going through that lot of people who didn't want her there. And she would keep her head up high, and she would never look back. And she would just go straight into that school, even though a lot of people didn't want her to. So that made me feel like I was powerful and that black people can do more than they are meant to do.
On the third edition of Black History Month, songs still close out there. We hopefully remind about the impact of Black History Month on history. Our goals may just stop going just because the month is over, but someone's always around.
The last feeling we have for you is a review of the book, The ABCs of Black History, written by Ariel Cortez. Issues important words and powerful emotions as we journey through the court. The ABCs of Black History is the best way to end our celebration as it shows us the importance of honoring our past and to inspire the future.
So the last thing that I wanna do is talk too much because I wanna give, you know, the Board of Education an opportunity to talk with our group. Ultimately, we have been so fortunate to have the support of the Board of Education of the district. When you think about CRSE, it's been a big rock. It's been one of the most ongoing, sustaining big rocks over the course of the past five or six years, at least as long as I've been a principal of Burnaby. And it's been great to watch our community grow together, to go from hearing about it, learning about it, engaging our students and our families in that work. I'm grateful that I have a building planning team. Can I just have my building planning team members who are here tonight just... So I have my parent member. I have a parent member. I have some teachers here tonight. And they've really been championing this work. So I think that it's really important that I say thank you to them because they've been the ones bringing forth those ideas and making sure that we're engaging with our families. They have a greater relationship with each other. We also have some families, students and families of the past here tonight because we've been engaging in this work with them. So ultimately, I am just so grateful to work with our students of color, our families of color, on making sure that their voices are represented as we engage in this. So again, just thank you for asking us to come down and talk. If there's anything you want to say or ask, please. So what do you think of Mr. Kayaza's shirt there?
Oh, I love that.
I love that shirt. Do you wanna know who made this shirt for me? Who made that shirt?
Who did?
Are you making them available?
They are.
So I'd like to hear from some of the students. What's your favorite thing about being a student part of the school? What's your favorite thing? Just wanna answer that question for me.
My favorite thing is to have Burnaby be the one here. Is everybody at Burnaby to come for...
Oh, nice.
Anyone else? Come on, there's a problem with you, come on.
That's Joshua's favorite music.
Yeah, our parents. Think of me twice, too?
I'll say something. My daughter has been at Burnaby since first grade, and now she's in the fourth grade. And I say one of the, one of my favorite, most significant things is communication. Communication is always ready and valuable. Teachers and even Mr. Kayaza, send an email, and then within a couple hours, you're getting a response. And if there's a concern that needs to be addressed, it's almost immediate, you know? And so I do like the response time. I like to hear about my daughter. If my daughter's going through a hard time, and I call up the teacher and say, "Hey, her pet just passed away," which happened, or "This just happened," or "She's had a rough morning." If you talk to her for me, or "Just be mindful." And the school counselors, psychologists, you know, they're just there to help the student. I think that's very important for my daughter's social, emotional growth. It is her development, in addition, that is really her.
One question to say. Come on, you're very innovative. Teach us under the... I'm sorry.
You know, here's that. It's amazing because having that open dialogue between parents and staff at school is so important, and it does so much for students. When students see that, parents and staff at school have a positive connection, that just brings them pretty closer, makes everyone stay in line. So that's good for them. And other parents, what's your favorite thing about being a Burnaby parent?
Mr. Kayaza?
I'll comment on that, too. We've been a Burnaby family for, I don't know, almost 17 years. When we came in, we're a biracial family. It's been quite the adjustment, or especially, I think, the last seven to eight years, just seeing the kids get more involved and become more engaged. And the communication between home and school is just really, really nice to see.
And also, the way that we're not treated differently, we don't feel different. They made us feel very comfortable. My son, last year, was his first year, and that was one of his concerns. There's not a lot of kids that look like me, and my hair is different. And he came home, and he told his mom, "They didn't treat me different." He made a lot of friends, and so we're just happy that we feel like a part of the community, not like, you know, so we're accepted and we're not bad.
In the video, I noticed that a next one cut through a report on a pay-per-view. Yeah, maybe you could, like, do a report on somebody famous and want to share.
That wasn't a report. That was, we asked them to read a book, or a page, out of a book each day for the month of Black History Month. So they were each asked if we would be able to tape them from a page. So each one was a famous black person that made a difference in American history. Does anyone remember who they read? Clarice, who'd you read? Yeah? Say it a little louder. Well, Maruda. Did you read one?
Yeah.
Do you remember who? You read with Clarice?
Raphael.
It took us a long time before we would get up on that stage and talk. So we know we were no longer wrong with that.
Nice. Thank you, too. So how it's came to be was, I think it was on snow day. I had stopped at Burnaby and took the outside for walking around the building and sharing with me in pride all of the planning that had gone on around Black History Month, but many of the other initiatives. And collectively, we thought it would be really wonderful to honor all of the hard work of planning of our teachers, and one of the students, and also the work of our students. And I think today, for me, it was really touching my heart is this concept and this really desire of wanting to belong and making sure that all of our students and our families feel like they belong because we are a local community. And so I just wanted to thank everyone who works really hard every day to make sure that our children feel safe and that we belong and that they are connected with the work. And this is why I sent you this. So thank you so much.
I would like to thank the Burnaby students and Kayaza also for making Burnaby such a bright spot in our district, and the work and time that we put in. And most importantly, what we do for our students and staff at Burnaby. I would like to thank all of them for being here tonight. You know, it's great to see people in person again, seeing students here and the great things that are happening at Burnaby. We really appreciate your time and helping coming in tonight. So staff members, parents, students, thank you so much for making Burnaby such a bright spot. It's such a, it's such a strength in our district, and our learning community really appreciates all that you do as a group to make our staff a star of the school. Thank you so much. With that, I wanna do something that I probably never had, in a big, archaic standing ovation. Thank you so much. I thank you so much.
I thought about that, because doing the motion was down there.
Yeah.
Mr. Allen, you'll share and convey when Ms. Brown makes her vote? If you can't hear very well. So we have students who consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, for soon, for participation with government, what we do is Consent Agenda is a list of items that have been reviewed and understood and more administrative in nature. Where rather than discussing each one and having an individual vote, we have a single vote on what is called Consent Agenda, which looks like it has seven items in the Consent Agenda. So with that, do I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda? I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda. First, Mr. Kincaid. Second, Mr. Bracken. All in favor of approval of Consent Agenda?
Ms. Brown?
There we go. Are you hearing me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm a no.
So we've got five yeses, one no. Thank you. President's Report and Communication. I just wanna share my appreciation to the board for taking yet another day of their, the evening of their time. We had a great learning event at the BOSI's Learning Center, Communication Learning Session for the Board. I think it was very productive, and we got to hear a lot of things, personal items that we didn't know about. And that was kind of an awesome thing to hear about people. And I won't share it all because some people might not want all of it out. It was fun, though. Okay, that's all I have for President's Report.
The only thing that I have, I have one item. I attended the District Safety Committee meeting last Tuesday, March 1st. And just a couple of items. We did receive a lot of updates in regards to district security, some updates with our security assessment, which we'll be hearing more about soon. And also, a big part of our conversation was in regards to the safety plan as well as the code of conduct, and some of the work we'll be doing moving forward. And of course, you'll be getting updates on that within the next month or so with that work. So those were some of the topics of discussion during that meeting. Other than that, I'm good.
Okay, from MCSBA, we talked about the governor's budget last week in Legislative Affairs Committee. One of the big items in there, Rick, I don't know if you've seen this, but it's getting a lot of attention, although I don't believe it's gonna go too far, but this transition to electric buses thing. Pretty much believe that's gonna be a non-starter just because they can't build them and the infrastructure that we would need for it is just not possible. So, but it's out there, and it's gonna get some, some play and stuff. Information Exchange tomorrow, featuring our superstar comms director and a couple of her colleagues from Gates and Churchville. And then the architect firms' interviews are tomorrow and Thursday night.
Um, I'll just add a reminder to the board. It is Music in Our Schools Month, and on Thursday, we have a music in our schools concert. It's a great event for people who haven't been or haven't been in a few years. It's just a culmination of a variety of our musical groups from throughout the district, and it's always impressive. So that is at 7:00 PM here in the pack on Thursday. If you can make it that, maybe you're going to the St. Patrick's, St. Bravura. I understand our very own Drumline will be performing. So that's another exciting musical event. And also, our middle school musical is coming up next Friday and Saturday. So get your tickets for that.
So do we need tickets for the first event you mentioned?
The Music in Our Schools Concert? Nope, that is open for all, right here, yeah.
Just real quick, I just, I did like the board retreat we had. I think we should do them like early. I got...
I've got one other thing I wanted to share. I received a letter from a lecturer with the Education Administrative Program at SUNY Brockport. And I just wanna give, share a shout-out that was provided about our Mr. Zinkewitz and his support that he has for that program. And I just wanted to read two of the sentences in here. "Ty is a great role model for future school leaders and an excellent spokesperson for your district, Spencerport. He provides students with meaningful tasks to examine the district. I'm grateful for the support that Ty and Spencerport School District has provided." So with that, I thank you so much for representing the school and sharing your knowledge and expertise. It's awesome. So thank you so much. That was from David Nimbleby, from a lecturer with the Educational Administrative Program at SUNY Brockport. Thank you, Ty. All right. Next on our agenda is Superintendent's Report, and I think we're gonna be heading back into the audience.
So we have our robotics, our Ranger Robotics leaders here tonight. The Board had identified this as an area just to learn a little bit more about, just to give some context. You know, certainly, we know that we've got a great program and a strong, successful program. But as with anything, COVID really changed how we participate in extracurricular activities, in particular robotics. So tonight, our presentation will give a little bit of where the robotics team has been and how they weathered through our COVID experience and what they're looking forward to. So if we wanna go down?
Hi, Sharks. I'm Liv. I'm a senior, and it's my fourth year on the team.
I'm Abra. I'm a senior, and it's my first year on the team.
I'm Clarice. I'm a senior, and this is my fourth year on the team. We are so excited to be on this special edition of Shark Tank where we would like to share with you our passion for first robotics. We are so excited to be on this special edition of Shark Tank where we would like to share with you our passion for first robotics, the relationships we have created,
and the sustainability of our program.
We are seeking seven minutes of your time and in exchange, we would like to tell you all about our program.
Here on Ranger Robotics, one of our favorite sayings is stronger together. Over the past three years, we have had 16 junior FLL, 15 FLL and two FRC teams. This progression of programs allows for all of our older Ranger Robotics members to go back and mentor all of our younger teams. But that's not all Sharks, we also host summer camps for all students in our district and present them with the opportunity to continue robotics by joining one of these FLL or junior FLL teams in the fall.
I bet you're thinking, how do we spread first outside of our district? Well, let me tell you about our relationship with Team 7299. Five years ago at the championship, a member of 3015 met a teacher from Mexico who was interested in starting his own first team. We helped them start an FRC and FTC team. Their team was able to visit us in 2019, but unfortunately their visit got canceled in 2020. We loved being able to show them our school, our community and our warehouse. Our warehouse, Western New York Area Robotics Experience, is a rented out practice space that we share with two neighboring school districts. Here we have a full-sized practice field along with machines and workspace. We invite other teams to practice on our field and we even host team events. Our team is not here to watch the Super Bowl. We are so grateful for the support we received from our school to have a space like this to sustain our relationships with other teams.
This year, we held our third annual STEAM Day. For this event, we guided the elementary students in our district through an enrichment lesson. With limited supplies, teams had to creatively work together to build the biggest tower they could. Previous lesson topics that were also based on New York State science standards include velocity and gravity. We are proud to have reached all 1,551 elementary students across all four elementary schools in the district. Similar to past years, four of our 3015 seniors took on the responsibility that this event entails. They coordinated with administrators, organized schedules, planned the challenge and prepared our team to teach the lesson. We were thrilled by the excitement and passion thrown by the elementary students and we aim to continue STEAM Days each year.
Aside from STEAM Days, we created Girls Power to Math and Science, or GEMS. This is a club created for and specifically designed for girls. This allows for girls in our district to experience our projects in a different way. By starting this club seven years ago, we have seen a massive increase in female participation in robotics. We are very proud that Ranger Robotics is 61% girls.
You may be wondering how else you could possibly cultivate more inspiration in math and science. Pondering the subject ourselves, we created STEM kits, including all necessary materials and instructions. We sent these highly interactive kits to schools in 14 different states, the Holy Cross School in Macondo, South Africa, and in combination with blankets to hospitals. This endeavor has led to a new relationship with Teacher Geek, a locally-based company that manufactures STEM activities. We are currently working together to develop a new 3015 kit of our own design. Many of our connections from these STEM kits have also evolved into relationships. The Holy Cross School specifically has become our close partner. One of our 3015 alumni traveled to the school, bringing our STEM kits with her. They're an organization called Love Must Act. And you're going to like this Sharks because they've reused their kits over and over. So we are planning to send them new kits, especially paired with our own instructional videos and curriculum online lessons within the coming months.
In June 2014, a Spencerport family tragically lost their four-year-old son Drake. They started Dreams from Drake, a nonprofit organization that helps children and teens who have lost a family member. By fate, 3015 members happen to be at the same location as the foundation's first meeting. We have since provided all the volunteers for their two main events of the year, the Birthday Bash and the Winter Gala. We have helped this organization raise over $10,000 and we are very honored that Drake's siblings are a part of the Ranger Robotics family.
RoboPalooza is my favorite outreach event of the season. We invite the whole Spencerport community to our high school gym. We have a full-sized practice field set up along with stations for each sub-team. Kids can make their own button, cat their own fidget spinner and even drive the robot. I remember the first time I went to RoboPalooza, I wasn't interested in joining robotics at all. But after watching three members present chairmans, I knew this is what I wanted to do. Now here I am, five years later.
We owe so much to the support of our Spencerport community. The Spencerport Board of Education's constant effort has garnered us so many advantages for our ever-growing program. This year, as in past years, we demonstrated our robot at a sectional basketball game in our gym. It was very exciting to see a robot shoot a basket and be cheered on by the crowd. We were proud. We felt this event was a great way to promote an electronics drive we are holding for the Holy Cross School as well as involve our community in our progress as we approach competition season. Seeking to make robotics accessible to all, we are always promoting robotics within our school and community, whether it be on the morning announcements as directed by Clarice, at sports events or via social media. We are, we value the variety of backgrounds of our students. Our students also participate in band chorus, sports drama club and so much more.
You'll notice as we have shared with you our passion, sustainability and relationships, it has revealed what is truly so important to us, the people that make up Ranger Robotics. Thank you Sharks for listening to our pitch.
I must appear for the competition. What is it about this year?
Oh, this year there is a central hub with a low and a high goal. And we have to shoot game pieces into the low goal for one point or the high goal for two points. And the end game is a climb, but it's like monkey bars that increase in height. So our robot reaches the traversal rung, which is the highest one. Yeah, that's the thing.
And as always, we pair with other robots, like we have a team of three, we have an alliance. So as always, it's like, we're always working together with people.
When is the, the Saturday? Saturday?
Yes, we have our first competition. We leave Thursday just to practice and then we will compete Friday and Saturday. And then we have Sunday off and we go straight to Albany, Monday through Wednesday. And then we have a little bit of time, but the next week after that, we leave for Cleveland. So that's Tuesday through Saturday.
And hopefully Texas over spring break if we qualify for Worlds, yes.
You'll be there.
I just want to compliment on your presentation skills. That was absolutely incredible. I couldn't be any more impressed with the presentation you just gave. I'm just curious to know, you're all seniors, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Has robotics, your involvement in robotics sway you in terms of your career plans or your college?
Yes, so I actually am going to be majoring in business and I never would have thought I would do that. But I joined marketing and MRM kind of helped me find my passion for that. I really enjoy public speaking, I enjoy the marketing aspect of everything. So that's why I'm doing that next year and I'm so happy that I have this experience.
I actually joined robotics this year for the first time, but I'm interested in, I started programming this year because of an internship I have at RIT. So I was excited to kind of join the programming side of robotics and learn it in a different context. So it has definitely influenced me to have more of an interest in engineering because I'd like to major in physics and astronomy. But it's definitely like, helped me confirm that this is what I want to do.
Yes, Abra's like the coolest person ever. She like co-authored a paper at RIT, like she's incredible. I cancel enough good things by that.
And for you?
Oh, I'm planning on being a lawyer someday. I'm a pre-law major. And robotics has given me a lot of confidence in public speaking because just interacting with people who, like judges or people that are higher up than me, I was not confident doing that when I started robotics freshman year. And now I feel very comfortable that I can talk to anyone.
Have the three of you made final decisions as to where you're going?
I have. I committed to play lacrosse at Emmanuel College. It's in Boston. I'm very excited.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to Cornell.
Congratulations.
Oh, I haven't committed yet, but I am set on going to Geneseo, so thank you.
That's awesome. Now, with your competition this weekend, it's at RIT. Do you deserve a schedule or do you know what times that you'll be competing? Or is that kind of an open-ended question?
For our presentation, we are given the chance to sign up, I believe on Thursday, we get to pick a time slot. But as far as our robot goes, I believe it's random, right? So, but you can go on bluealliance.org, I think it is, and you can just search in Team 3015 and you can actually watch our match from online.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there going to be a robot?
It's fun.
I'm curious about the STEM Day when you were talking about building the towers. I love those kind of, what were the supplies that the students got to use this year?
They had popsicle sticks and a little bit of tape and a dream.
For the older grades, they had binder clips and they didn't get the tape. So they had to like work on how they were going to use the binder clips to like switch the angles of the popsicle sticks so that they could stand up by themselves. So it was an interesting challenge.
I always go ahead.
Well, when Mr. Luna and I were talking, he was talking about the timeframe. He thought it would be great to have this presentation and to have it be a really authentic practice opportunity. But as I was watching you and I agree, it was a wonderful presentation. Could you just, when I think about robotics and you see the match in the robot, but this is such an important piece too. How could you just explain how it plays into the competition and the whole experience?
Yeah, so we're kind of on the people side of robotics, but we also go to the warehouse and we try to observe the robot as well. I'm actually on programming, so I do do quite a bit of robot stuff too. So I get to kind of dabble in both sides, the public speaking aspects and the marketing aspects and the robot parts. But we all come to the warehouse on Saturdays and like watch practices.
Our team is unique. Not every team has a chairman's presentation, not everyone is able to, or not every team does the community service and outreach that we do. So being a part of 3015 is such a privilege because we have, I know very little about robots, but I could tell you all about everything else that we do outside of it. So and I know it's, that's not the case for every team based on funding, community services. They just don't have the time or anything like that.
So have you all been to a world competition?
I have.
I did not go to Worlds.
I've been, yes, I've been once. It's quite an experience. It's a lot. There's a lot going on. You get to meet a lot of new people. There's a lot of opportunities. And especially being on this marketing aspect, it's a lot of like talking to people, kind of telling them about your team, showing them like who we are and what we want to accomplish and our goals.
Still do the big rear place? Always the kind of sneak a few rings in, I'll tell you that. I had the honor to join the team to go to St. Louis years ago. And it was the most exciting time that I had. And I hope you, all three have a chance to do that. I'm pretty confident that you'll be there, I'm excited for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, girls.
Thank you.
Nancy, thank you so much.
Yeah, I should go form two guys up for that. Yeah. Tell you what, there's, before they start, just look at that. And I say this a lot, you guys are so much more than robots, right? Those girls are special and we have 10 of us, 20 of us people that do that kind of stuff on our program. And, you know, that's incredible. That was their first time in front of strangers, I guess I'd say, right? That's, that's impressive, what they were able to do. And they're the real talent. I don't think there's a more inclusive program in our district. And I always say it, right? You can have a kid who goes to the local all-day long and can run it well or learn how to run CNC machines, but you can now become best friends with people in science, right? That's what it does, just brings a lot of different types of people together. Those girls are special. They're not, they're not robot kids. They don't build robots. They do have other aspect of our program that just is at a different level. Our chairman's type of mentors. Nancy does such a phenomenal job with them that just run with it. The Shark Tank, the outfits, it was absolutely perfect. It was good. I don't know what they cost us, but I'm sure they did. I get the bills later. So thanks for having me. I would like to come over and just talk a little bit about what the state of the union is for robotics. I wonder if some of the people that's on the board now, and Miss Swan that's here. And, you know, where we started, what was the impact of COVID and what do we need to recover from it? Because we were at a point where 300 kids in the room, just like anything, you know, COVID's kind of like stopped the world. And we lost a lot. We learned a lot too. So we did gain some, but talk about how we're going to recover and our, what was we need to sustain this? Because as you see, robots are awesome. We build really good robots, but there's a lot that goes into that as well. And we're a program, we're just building robots, we're the total package, we're a program, you know? And, and one of the slides up there is what is it going to be, what does it take to be world class? That was a world-class presentation from high school, these high school girls, it really, really was. Now you're going to get the tech teacher who can't work tech, so just to let you know that. I was sitting at the world, Kevin, probably when you went with us, Dean came in at the closing ceremony, always goes, come on. Bobby, that's what I usually do when I'm in here doing it. There we go. He always gives us homework and Dean came as the founder first, right? And he likes to make it entertainment, right? They'll have athletes there, they'll have people in the music industry there, right? Try to keep it hip for the kids, right? You think robot competition, make these robot kids are walking around, right? Our team's a little bit different. We have all types of, different types of kids, our program. But he said something to me that just really, really stood with me as, I want you guys to transform our culture by creating a world where science and technology are celebrated, where young people dream of becoming science and technology. That's the truth. People can celebrate it all the time, bouncing a ball, singing a song. We need thinkers, tourists, it's more. And I try to get them from the youngest age possible. We just try to show them, you could spark something in a kid, you never know. There's going to be a time, and it's just going to be me rambling a little, but a kid is going to go through it for its robotics. He's going to work in Walmart. It's going to happen. We have special people. Look at the girls that are just right here. And we need to celebrate those type of people. And I always say, here's the history, right? I remember, you can stop on this picture, remember we had cameras, we never knew how to replace the date. This is 2008 and I remember sitting, this was a big time in my life. I remember in the fall, I was coaching at Churchill Child Football and we had the number one ranked football in the state. And I was going into the fall and I was on the wrestling program here, we were ranked in the country. That was, it's awesome, right? So a guy coaches me at Open House and he's like, hey man, you're here about this thing on first robotics? Come on buddy, football coach, first robotics, football shop teacher, first robotics. So in typical fashion, me and young Tim O'Connor, if you guys see him up there, we said, sure, we'll do it. Me and Timmy were like, hey man, we'll just tag team. You go one day, I'll go one day, all right? So, long story short, those 17 kids and those four or five adults in that picture turned into that in just 10 years. So we had a goal, what we're going to do, how can we get from point A to point B? And we started the young programs. I worked with Christina Bowerman, our community editor person. We started right at the low level, we're going to say, let's build this program, let's show them we can do sports program. I learned a lot. I used to coach with Bill Jackett, oh, you got to get it done before anybody else can. So we implemented our junior softball program, cage or four. First year, we did the first one with my kids in kindergarten, in my living room. We had a couple of families over. Next year, Christina and I tag teamed. We had, I don't know, 60 kids. Next year, we had 100 decided, 32 people on the waitlist. Right? This is what people want and I think they're burning. I'm guilty of it. My kids play soccer, they play baseball, basketball, something y'all here kids do. But I want my kids to do this, I want my kids to do this. I always say, I'm a smart worker, football, okay, right? Like, I want our kids to do that. And that picture was taken randomly. He said, hey, everybody here? And it's just like, everybody here tomorrow. There's probably like another 20 people that are not in that picture. That was pretty awesome. That's all our age groups and a lot of our adults, a lot of our mentors. Just a little history, but the one thing I always say to people, like every kid who goes pro in our sport, that's a big deal, right? It doesn't, we don't push everyone to be engineers. We don't want that, right? Because that's, that picture always will do surgery, it did. We want people that are going for pretty Cause that's, that picture of all the windows are pretty good. We want people that are going for pre-law. We want people that are going into business. We want engineers, we want doctors, we want lawyers, right? You know how the program that is so mature, it's going to bring so many different types of people together. If you lined up the basketball team, the wrestling team, the band, you would say, that's a band kid, that's a basketball player. You look at 3015 Ranger Robotics, you couldn't tell them long enough. There's just so many different types of kids that we bring in. Uh, just for the new people, I'll be real quick with this. This is like the progression. I always say when I say, put those acronyms with junior FLL, not FLL. When you think our junior program, this is a little, we don't care about robotics at that point. We'll care about the city, we're just talking in front of a game. That's who they really, that's how they get to those girls that are up there, right? They assume we can get them competitive in their public speaking, that the sky's the limit then, right? Okay, I can do this. Now I can design it. We, we showed them they got one motor, one sensor, but the real victory is working with our high school kids and working with the other government to get them to where they're at. Then they graduate and they're first little competitive. That's the junior FLL. My two boys run a Bernaby Junior FLL team this year. Uh, this is their first little look at, uh, sensors and motors and paint. And then there's a chairman aspect of it. The program progresses all the way through. Uh, the, up top right, that's FTC. We downloaded this a few years, we've been in this since '04. Seventh major, there's two cool beyond the robot label team. So we wanted to get them going into some, uh, some real robots, get them to a twelve by twelve field. But it's becoming kind of a weird graphic. The season started in September and our real varsity season starts in January. And it was really big mentor, mentor burnout. We're going a long, long time. And the program only allows you to have sixteen kids on it, so we really couldn't have that. Uh, that was becoming a problem. And then our varsity team is the FRC, that's the hundred and twenty pound robots. Before I listed the numbers, for the pandemic, we had to create two FRC teams, because we had over a hundred students. One robot. That's unheard of around the country and the world. Probably only a few handful of teams. They have two varsity teams coming out of our high school. We just had to do it. We just had the numbers of kids and we needed, we needed just to get kids and their robots. We're always preparing them. Uh, we're always going to graduate our best kid, I would say. Right? We're always graduating our best kid. We need to definitely keep that, that train going. Uh, you know, you've seen the accolades. The big thing about us is we're going to build great robots. That's our goal. We want to be the world champions every year. It's a lot going to draw the ball, it's going to bounce our way. But our biggest thing is we want to be great people. And, you know, what they do in the schools, who cares what the banners you put on the wall, winning robot competitions? You could spark your kids' interest at a young level, uh, and get them to know it's contagious, right? You're going to bring their friends. You never know when they say that kid, five, six, seven, eight years from now, he's hopefully he's on the cover of a magazine. You know, it's going to happen. One of the biggest things I always want to hit my head on is a hundred, one million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in college scholarships through First Robotics. So when you're, uh, sort of done against their college package, it says First Robotics Scholarship, fifty thousand dollars, right? That's through this program. And that is, uh, partnered with many schools around the country, four, five hundred schools around the country offer First Robotics Scholarships. I'm hoping, I'm crossing my fingers that I could come at the end of this year and say, hey guys, we have two million dollars in college scholarships through First Robotics. I'm hoping. Uh, that's going to get done, right Nancy? All right, so pre-COVID participation, uh, I still remember, and you guys do. It's March thirteenth. We literally loaded it into RIT. The pit went up, the robot went on the bed. The handle reads on the phone, yo, I'm sending a plastic to get you. We're shutting it down. Yeah, that was, that made it right at the event. So we had two FRCs, we had 3015, 2716, and I know I'm throwing numbers at you, that made it three thousand fifteen teams to sign up for first. Now we're into nine thousands, okay? So that's what that means. And then 2716 is our JV team. They give you a number that's sort of close to your original program. But like I said, there's nine thousand teams. Some have folded, some are still going, but we're at three thousand. So at that point, we had, you know, hundred and twenty high school students. Each one of our elementary schools and homeschooling each had an FLL team. Uh, we can't advertise that program. That just happens. If we advertised, we would have twenty of them. Uh, so there's kids that are left home on a waitlist. We just can't do it. Uh, and then our junior FLL team at the peak, that fall of 2019, we were even in the department. We were able to have a hundred and two students at Hodgeburg once a week for twelve weeks. Uh, it was pretty awesome. That was K4. So post-COVID participation, just like every program in this situation, people kind of found other stuff to do, right? So this year, we had to make a decision in the fall, we're not going to run 2716 this year, our JV first program, just because of numbers. And the biggest thing was our mentors, right? Our mentors were our, our, our engineers from industry. Uh, they're the ones that really, uh, you know, kind of guided them. We just, if we just burn out, it's just going to become an issue. Uh, we weren't able to run our junior FLL in the fall. Uh, we might still do it in the spring, but it's just that, you know, we were opening schools. We didn't really know what was going to happen. So we decided we worked together, you know, we will push it off to the, to the spring and maybe we can do that. So that, that's our, that's our community program. We were still able to, to have fifty-eight students or seven FLL teams happen. And one, and four at Koshberg. Still able to do that. But, you know, that'll come back. Our biggest asset, I believe, is our, for a number of reasons. Uh, Joe Galena, Nancy Manchus was only one person of all those kids. Uh, pre-COVID, you know, been eighty-nine adults volunteering. When I say volunteering, guys, I'm talking hundreds, hundreds of hours, okay? Uh, after COVID, we had sixteen. And the big reason before that is, yeah, last year we had robotics, but it was like, okay, adults can't come into the school, right? Yeah, we're district employees. So we kind of had to work a little bit more, a little more stuff. It just wasn't the same. Uh, first, they pushed the program out, it was FRC at home, using kind of the same little constraints of the previous year's games. It wasn't a lot of stuff that was going on. Uh, but we managed to do really well. We, you know, we, we really embraced it. The kids and the adults that, hey, we're, we're going to put our best foot forward and we're going to, we did okay last year. All right. Also, an impact of having sponsors. This is, this is something that is becoming a very, very, very big deal for us. And you could look at those numbers. They're, they're huge numbers, but there's a downward trend happening. And you guys, you guys know that this is not giving up. It's a very unstable economy. Uh, stuff is costing more and we're not getting it in. Uh, registration fees and data, uh, robot even, right? Try to buy anything on trying to, we need five of each. Uh, everything's costing a lot of money. So at the peak of our, our sponsorship, we had fifty-one thousand dollars in corporate sponsorship. Uh, this year we had thirty-five. We lost some big ones and they went radio silent. Uh, and this is a little bit different graphic that means the exact same thing as this, that last slide. So 2020, that was the back of our T-shirts. So if you don't even think about a program that, you could look at that. Right? Big sponsor, big money on top. Uh, you could tell that that's a lot more crowded on the left. It, it's tough. It's becoming tough to get anything out of these guys. Uh, the affordable, the affordable graphics guy there, he just did our trailer, re, re-rap our trailer. So we put him on there, but it's, it's just becoming, uh, a little bit difficult to bring money in. This is our budget and I'll be somewhere between two thousand and nine, I can't find out why it is because, you know, we're kind of in an outlier year here. So our budget's about a hundred and thirteen thousand. It's a small business that we're going in. Seventy thousand of the student travel and, you know, kids pay for their travel, but there's a lot of times we do scholarship kids. We'll never leave a kid behind for money, right? That's what our sponsors for it is. Let's just get through it. All right. So I was asking, hey, what are some recommendations that can really help you guys continue, uh, moving forward? And I'm just going to go over a few things that I think that'd be really, really helpful that I think is a necessity. Uh, this is almost like a plea for help because it's becoming hard to get through stuff. First thing, we need to move from a club to a team. And I put up there, teams have budgets, clubs have pizza parties. There's nothing wrong with clubs, they're awesome. But if you meet at one of the clubs, you meet once a month, you guys get together during activity here and you finally go out the door, right? Do something else. That stat over there, five thousand seven hundred and eleven, that's a week and a half ago when I started this. That's the amount of man hours that's gone into the robots so far this year for January. That's a big number. Now, there's a shift change that happens at this school and I say this a lot, uh, but if you're not here, you don't see it. So ding ding ding, bell goes off at two twenty, everyone leaves the building. Two fifty, robots comes in till nine o'clock every day of the week. That's a whole shift change. So those teachers that have been working from seven AM, they'll leave till nine AM. That's a long time, right? We need a direct advocate. We don't have, and I'm going to use football as an example for that. John Dow does never have, never has to worry about his bus being there, his grass being cut, brand new football helmets, security guards with their yellow shirts, the lights going on. He never has to worry about that. I have to worry about it when he just walks through a door, right? Just to walk through the door at a First Robotics event is fifteen thousand dollars. If we, if companies go radio silent, we don't have a First Robotics team. We need a line budget. We really do. And we've been having this conversation for years and it's just becoming tough. It's becoming a part of our job, constantly worrying about, do we got money? Because that fifteen thousand dollars hits you in the door. It does not build you a world-class robot. World-class robots are very, very expensive. We need to help out some of these teachers that we have. We have guys here that volunteer thousands of hours for free. They don't make anything. We're going to lose people. So big thing, we need to be a team, not a club. I took these numbers from Word of the Agent Saps in 2019, 2020. Uh, and this is just comparing and I, these are category one, sports, soccer, football, wrestling, and the last one I just combined. And this is just a comparison of the number of participants, nine twelve, number of coaches we have, coaches salary, and what the ratio of people are, right? We're traveling with ninety-one kids. We get three coaches, make seventy-six hundred dollars here. I need more coaches. I do. We're going to lose great people. We are, I'm telling you. Uh, it already started. We're going to lose great people. Uh, we put in just as much, maybe probably more time than those guys. And I'm not taking anything away from them. Sports is very, very important, but at some point, we need to kind of like, make a little effort going on here. We, we, we need to.
Joe, your season's like on your own, I mean, theoretically.
So I was only comparing this to our varsity season. I didn't want to do the whole year long thing. You are correct. But I wanted to go, you know, apples to apples kind of deal, right? Our season's a lot longer and we travel further away and overnight and that kind of stuff. But I wanted to, wanted to compare what our numbers are compared. I didn't put, you know, for a full program. I didn't want to put, uh, modified stuff in there just because there's some outliers or coaches salaries that'll really throw that off on those modified levels. So I didn't want to do that. Uh, this is it. This is very just for, at some point, we're going to lose great, great people. Uh, we already did. The guy on the left, Alex, no one, but it sounded younger than the other one. Worked two hundred hours last year. I made him clock it in there. I said, Joe, and he was, you know, Alex is an emotional man. He said, I just, I just can't do it anymore. Family, my wife, I can't, I can't do it, right? We're starting to start family, that kind of stuff. Colin, world-class robot. Started this here in Texas with one forty-eighth, the Robo-Wanglers. Uh, they build the bats. There's a robot, robots built with bats plant, right? So he was right there. We have, he did three hundred and twenty-five hours this year. Probably more last year. He hasn't been traveling that. Right? He has to. Justin, Montoya, you guys probably know him. Not only is he amazing for our team, he actually runs a weekly FRC show that he sits there and talks to other programs around the country, getting ideas, working with their engineers, their mentors, wealth of knowledge. Go look at the bald guy in the middle, it's me. Uh, Nancy, her husband's here. I was going to say this, but I shouldn't. Nancy won't clock her hours, okay? She won't clock her hours because she doesn't want Pete to know how many hours she does and what she makes. So, sorry Pete, now you know.
Sorry.
Okay. And then Bobby, uh, Bobby is the biggest example of positivity of this program. A lot of you guys probably know Bobby is the guy who sets up your mics, the guy who makes sure the video is working, that kind of stuff. Bobby's a world-class engineer. I don't know if you guys know him. So Bobby started in 2008, he's down the left, right? Why is Bobby the perfect example of this program? Because Bobby's worked his way up. Bobby networked and made the right contacts with people in Paris. Bobby graduated with talent. Bobby probably had one interview. Paris, if he got higher, he can't play again. Bobby puts up a safe. If we know the role he does, then we'll be forever. It's awesome. So I put this on here because one of my recommendations is to put this on the athletic calendar. We have to. We have to do something like this. We can't be a club or an activity anymore if we're going to keep these great, but we have to. So it, you guys know it, it takes one, then a second one, then a third one. And next thing you know, we're average. We don't want to be average. And the reason why I put this up is our current cycle, they're so low compared. It could be a first year, so last year, I'm so happy that it's happening, but we improved to have girls play football. That's amazing. Another opportunity for kids. I met with Jackie, talked about it. She's going to pay their varsity coach or whoever it is, you guys, four thousand dollars. Okay? She's going to pay, this other guy's okay. Nancy, Nancy is group six, the third one over, twelve hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh, we kind of help people out. We're going to lose people. And some, I'm sorry, I apologize, okay? We're go, we're going to, we need, we need to, to really figure this situation out. I've been in this room many times and I have seen people have said, Joe, this is a flagship program for us. This is a marquee program for us. Guys, like I could coach five, if I want, next year, make three thousand dollars more because of my levels of experience, then I'm making robots year round. Okay? Uh, and I don't want you to think that this is a, Joe wants to, it's not. I, I know this is a marquee program, in a world-class program, you have to keep people here. We start losing, the blocks start tumbling, it's going to happen. Then people are just going to find other things to do. Uh, I need help. I also need help with registration fees. I do a big part of my day. Nobody else has to worry about entering the door. We do. If we just lost all that sponsorship, they decide to go radio silent on me, we're going to lose it. So I took comparative districts, Churchill, Fairport, Penfield and us, right? Number of students we have, their coaching salaries and what their district contribution is. So Churchill gives their program thirty-three thousand. That cost, that covers, uh, the cost of registration fees. Fairport, same. Now Penfield, they're an outlier. They need zero bots. But listen to this stat. It's two thousand five. L3 Harris has given them forty thousand a year. That's intermarket budget and the engineers. Get six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, L3 Harris is giving. Hey, you know, it's two thousand. Those guys aren't there anymore. Those big sponsors right there are there anymore. I find them, can't do it. Uh, our district does, you know, they pay our students and they do give us five thousand dollars for traveling if they make it to the championship. So we got to make it to the championship to get that five thousand dollars to the kids. Guys, I need help. I really do. Uh, I don't know what more to say with that. We need help. Bobby, Bobby, L? Bobby gets me out of a lot of jams. All right. The last thing I should talk about, I'm going to leave that in a minute's space. If you've ever walked through the tech facilities down here, you'd be like, you guys build world-class robots out of this place? Uh, because it's also putting a strain on our access, right? I think this one, you walked in there the other day and they had the roof sections. That's in the middle of robot season. That's the only place we have to work. Now we do have the warehouse, which is off. Where else is great? We are sharing that tiny space with three other teams, right? It's not like we go there, build stuff. Uh, we need space. And we, we talked about this in the past, you know? And my recommendation would be, use the space if you have it, if you have it. I always say, hey man, at East High School, these cap looks great for a robot facility, right? Uh, we talked about a step center at some point, man, we got to have some vision. Don't be in the step center. Let's go. Let's do it. You know, I hear on Twitter, robots are part of the past by the, by the community on a supportive occasion. And I'll hold on, do what it takes. I'll knock down doors. We need something. We need to pull in our parking lot and boom, there's a suspension for a step center. We have to. Not all about football stadiums, basketball courts and swimming pools. You guys got to think about the future of these kids and what's going to... You guys got to think about the future of these kids and what's going to happen. That's all mine. Ball hitting forty days. But we need to put these kids in a position where they can be world-class as well. Whoops. Bobby, there we go. Uh, and these are just, you know, just summary of everything, you know, that I think we need to continue growth and continue operating at the status that we have been into the future. And then, you know, a lot we talked about, we'll be competing this weekend. That's a quick turnaround. We got another, uh, N R I T. Obviously, our chairman's team is ready. I would like, not at a level they are, hopefully it will be. Then, you know, we go Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday, we're going to have a little day to wash some clothes. And then we're back four thirty in the morning. We're leaving for Albany. Uh, on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, get a week off, then we'll be competing again in Ohio. Hopefully, we can make it to the championship. Uh, crossing our fingers, you know? Hopefully, the kids can put out a good product and do you all proud about that. That's all. I really appreciate the opportunity and I do thank you all for your support that you've given me over the years and the program. Uh, I just hope that maybe you can take a couple of these things in and maybe help us out. Tony, I don't come up here too often and ask for stuff. It's usually celebratory. But I thought that this was a point where we need to really look at what we're doing here. And we've done really well, well, we have, but I'm telling you, the blocks will continue to fall if we, we don't take care of some of these guys that are really crucial to our, our program. So I, I thank you all very much. Uh, any questions?
Do you know where our team is already restricted?
Oh, yeah, yeah. R I T, every kid has to show for vaccination, adults as well, and it is massive. If you do plan on coming out, which I would love to do, kids would love to talk to you guys. Uh, Saturday is hot. Do you come out on Saturday? That's when, that's when stuff's going on. Uh, the first few days of the fall, which is Saturday is a great time.
So do you need to, sorry, card events?
Yeah, Devon Card, everywhere, max, on the R I T campus, yes. It's funny though, because we're going to Albany a day later. No vaccine, no mask.
Because they're living at R I T.
They are not living in spectators this year, which is great, as long as you have your vaccination. Who else?
Joe, thank you.
No, thank you, guys.
Thank you for putting this together. Thank you for being here tonight. Uh, thank you for all that you have done, what you continue to do. Um, really appreciate the work you've put in to this presentation and most importantly, the world of thought and your mentors and your staff and Steve as well, for all that you have done to make this a world-class operation, your expectation for it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys. Have a great weekend. I'll keep you guys posted on everything and hopefully it works out all the way to the end.
So we do not have something to present, uh, but thanks for having us. I'm Maria Doydy. I'm the coordinator in special education for preschool through grade five.
I'm Maria Doydy. I'm the coordinator in special education for preschool through grade five. So I have the privilege of kicking us off with highlighting some pieces, some of which you'll hear a lot more about during our presentation tonight and others which we just want to mention to, to highlight of our year so far. So one of the pieces that we'd like to talk with you tonight about is the expansion of our integrated coach teacher model into second grade. Another piece that you will hear a lot more about today is the implementation and revision of the student intervention process that's available to the school. Uh, and that has been revamped in order to provide a more collaborative opportunity for our. I'm excited to talk a few more about that later. Uh, a piece that we won't go into a great depth about today, but I'm happy to provide you with more information on it, is that we worked as a related services department. So our language, that occupational therapist, has worked to develop a framework and a handbook for, um, tier one response to intervention as aligned to the multi-tiered support model of a handbook for our distributed with students when there's periods, we get some deficit areas with, with occupational therapy and, um, physical therapy, including, uh, process flow charts, that's what we mentioned to set that up in Albany. And we are really pleased to share that with all of our staff and so that's been going really well. And then the final piece has been professional development that we've taken a three-pronged approach to. So one of the pieces has been around social emotional, which we're going to talk a little bit more about that in our presentation today. The second component has been on the reference to strategic learning for our most struggling students and this addresses the unfinished learning component of things. So through that piece, we've incorporated gap-holding, differentiation, and especially instruction. And then our final problem, professional development, has been on the integrated coaching model and all of the pieces that go along with it. So how to let students face goals, how to collect data, progress monitor, uh, teaching within the resources we decided as well as a review of our case management. Move a few of our highlights.
So during, uh, burnout presentation, this one, I understand that we were one community and that's really one of our initiatives that we've been working on for a couple of years now. And really, one of our initiatives is increasing inclusion opportunities for our students with disabilities. And it's been one of our intense focus, focus. You know, we look at it through a variety of lenses because inclusion is so important for students with disabilities. There are many benefits of inclusion and it is for both our students with disabilities as well as students in the general population. You're looking at, uh, there's academic benefits, there's social emotional benefits. There's benefits for, um, general education teachers. They're learning how to teach more students in their classrooms. Um, but our students, it increases their social skills and it increases their self-image, which we see a lot of times when students are separated from their general educations. And it helps with problem-solving skills and it really helps with them learning how to respect themselves. We don't take these decisions lightly though, and, you know, and that's why we've been so thoughtful over the years as we've looked at everything with opportunities, because not every student belongs fully included in general education. So when we're making these decisions, we sit at the table and look at their learning profile, what needs to be done. And we're really looking at making determinations over what they need to be successful in setting. And we make sure that we're providing those opportunities with everything that they need. So if they need additional support through teacher support or they need additional support through artistic technology, those kinds of things. We're making sure that we have that available to them so that they can be successful in those settings. We have lots of different opportunities for them. So we have that integrated coaching model that Maria referenced. We have opportunities in the lack of, at the secondary level, special areas, in work-study programs, permanent classes. We'll know about lots of different tools for our students and they have been really impactful all over the year. The most critical piece though, that we find is case management. Our special education teachers, they have small case loads. And when I say small, some are bigger than others, but none of them have a case load of more than twenty students. Um, and that allows them to really be able to get to know their students well, um, know their learning strengths, know their needs, and to be able to really critically look at how to help support them in the classroom environment, in the school environment, and really in the community when they're moving out into those work environments, the vocational environment. Being able to connect with parents, understanding, uh, how they lead their students, you know, out at home, in the community as well, you know, as well in school, you know, when talking about what they think they can be successful. You know, we take pride in how our teachers work with our students and families to be able to get them where they need. Maria will talk more later. Our element of special education teaching really worked hard this year through our design process to take that to the next level to.
We're going to continue with the academia channel. One of the pieces that, uh, well, Andrew and Maria have talked about now. Been here for the board meetings that we've presented over the last two years, over the last three specifically, we've talked about that integrated coaching model. Um, so, um, when we talk about that, that's, that's difficult work. We try folks that have made, you know, some, some very, very difficult work. How is it that change, just it's moving from self-contained classroom to a self-contained classroom, to the ICT model? Um, but this is also an instructional philosophy shift as well. So, um, this work doesn't happen at a side level. And honestly, the support that you folks have provided to us, um, this year, we have three, as you told us, we're a K eight, uh, group of special education, uh, teachers. But we've also had a relationship with Rosetta, who's our instructional, uh, coach through Moses. We've been working with this for several years, preparation for this work, um, in order to make this shift to provide more inclusive options for our students. And so some of the things, we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit more in detail in a few minutes. But, um, you heard Maria talk about the professional element that's gone on, um, at both levels. And I, when I talk about levels, I'm looking at it as K eight, nine twelve right now. That's how we kind of broken up the, uh, the levels of support. But things from the work in Gillingham, work that we've now provided to all the teachers. Again, you probably remember, working Gillingham from years past, all of our special education teachers are now trained to be elementary level. Gillingham, um, at the secondary level, we've been able to do things like, um, specific training for special education teachers on certain topics within special education with Ellen's help or Freeze's help. Uh, we've also, knowing that ICT is something that impacts not only our special education, but also our gen ed teachers as well. We've been able to do things like presentations to our library to get them, uh, to build their level of training of what this entails and how they can, uh, utilize creative techniques to support students in their classrooms as well. So, um, this has been something that has been helpful, uh, extremely helpful in allowing us to expand these opportunities. Um, over the past three years, like we talked about, we've really been able to increase those opportunities for our kids. When we look specifically at ICT, you know, seven classrooms of ICT at our elementary levels. We've been able successfully bring ICT up to sixth and seventh grade at Todd's go. And our plan next year is to continue to move that with that cohort. We'll talk about it in a little bit here. That one cohort that started in fifth grade three years ago has now moved up and is our current seventh grade cohort. Will be eighth grade next year. This is a group that we're talking about here, a great bunch of kids. And, and again, we started with eleven students who came over to us as, uh, sixth graders in Todd's go. And Andrew's going to talk a little bit about some of the, the data behind this program as far.
Okay, so as Mike referenced, these students are seventh graders now. If you remember a couple of years ago, we highlighted these students. They were, uh, so Mr. Kai is a nice staff in the eighth grade, ninth grade school unit. And we had been talking for years about making a whole park that's going to do this as a COVID rate. And we had made a decision with the current fourth graders to do it for second grade. There were eleven students in that one cohort, that one generation, and they were a creative group. They had been together for quite a few years and they were already not very, very well, sort of struggling in the interpersonal relationships. So we began academically, they had two challenges. We knew that they needed to get out of the classroom, out of that self-contained classroom. Um, so we said, what better time to do is to kind of work home teaching game with Kathy Wilson and they looked at that. So we not having the door in fashion, gave them our idea, we tried and, and sure. Knowing that a lot of students with disabilities, eleven students were coming out of that self-contained classroom and into their class. They welcomed it with open arms. And we also slipped them off. So I realized I sent one teacher and, uh, we were able to kind of, sort of separate them a little bit, break up the loving. Uh, but as we followed, I heard it to be breaking up.
So then all level of the fact.
We, so there were a few of them that went into a different classroom, but the most, the, the most struggling learners went into the academy. And, um, and really out of those eleven, so after, when they moved from fifth to sixth grade, only two of them were in eighth grade. Because what they really needed was just getting a little bit. You know, and when they had the positive role models and they were learning, um, um, you know, multiple kinds of teaching methods, they were able to get it, which they just weren't getting it before. When, even when we went back, it was, it was really powerful. Now, that's a thing that other kids didn't go into that setting, but they did, because they needed that level of support. But it just shows you the fluidity of this kind of a program where the students can, can come in and out. But so did the, the general education setting and so did the special education support. So we haven't gone over twelve in three years. We've been able to maintain the capacity. And the kids are really.
So the quantitative data that Andrew, just, just share it. That's important. You know, starting with eleven students, three students continued in that ICT program from that original cohort and original group. Um, that's, that's a good parameter to gauge that, that success out of program, but it's also that qualitative. Right? One of the biggest things that, um, when we're looking to, to have more inclusive opportunities for kids and having that power of that self-contained setting is really that social influence. When we talk about the interpersonal relationships, one of the things that we find all the time is that the kids didn't have their gen ed role models to be able to, to fashion some of those interpersonal relationships and those skills. And so, um, you know, I go back to this other piece about, maybe your reaction is, great, get eleven kids coming into the, to the gen ed setting is, is difficult, right? But we've had people that, um, when we started this program last school year in Todd's go, um, going to create a team of folks that, um, generated some ideas, generated some thoughts, you know? This would be, you know, for example, they, after fourth through sixth grade, in this group of students in the ICT models that, you know, we really need to have an opportunity to have a touch point with kids on a monthly basis, several times throughout the week. So we can build.
One of the biggest focuses of our ICT program around is social motion.
Thanks, Bobby. It's just, uh, being able to have built that in. So we've been able to kind of modify and adjust things and now seventh grade with this group. And this is Stephanie Wolf, who's our ICT special education teacher, working corner, who's one of our gen ed teachers, teaches science um, in the ICT team. Uh, we've been able to kind of continue to make those adjustments. And again, it goes back to, um, having good open conversations, department meeting, utilizing free support, own support to, to really make sure that we're tailoring this to meet the students' individual needs within the setup. And now this group has been in this, uh, in the gen ed setting for such a long period of time. Like Andrew said, that the key piece of this is that with being able to then move out to CT sections and in some cases some gen ed sections as well. So, um, without further ado, that's the ladies.
One of the biggest focuses of our ICT program is social emotional acceptance amongst our peers. How do you think that the identified students are fitting in with their gen ed peers this year?
So a lot of our students with I E Ps in this class are very, very motivated to work independently and also with their peers. Um, they do not like to be single that or to. and also with their peers. They do not like to be single dad or to have to work on something different from anyone else. I think that ICT gives them that opportunity to work with all of their peers and to be exposed to the content that their peers are also getting this year.
Yeah, I think I've definitely seen more self confidence in them as the year has gone on. I've seen a lot more motivation. They're taking the things that we're teaching them in class, especially about what studying and using them outside of class. They seem a lot more motivated to study. And I think also just having those positive role models in the classroom, a lot of them have developed new friendships that maybe they didn't have before. And then also in terms of like discussion and content, like things that they're exposed to, I think they're at a higher level than if they were taught separately.
They're talking about exposure to content, you know, they're receiving the same content as the rest of the classroom. But when you walk around the class, what you're not noticing, or what the students aren't noticing really, is they might have different work that they're at maybe as and the students aren't being called out as being different. And I think that that's one of the most impressive factors right there is that their work is at their level, you know, is what they are able to do, and they're really successful with it. And what better way to merge and inclusion is feeling accepted and being really successful.
All right, switching gears a little bit, I'd like to talk with you a little bit about our student intervention process. This has been one of the biggest initiatives for elementary special education this year. And it came about, the revision to the process came about from just working with our staff over the course of the past year, listening to them and their students. What has come through loud and clear across all four of our elementary buildings is that our special education teachers wanted opportunities to work with each other, to pick each other's brains on what kids need and what kids struggle with and what resources they can share amongst each other. And they wanted to be empowered at that child's place. And so when we sat and we took a look at the data that Kai has provided to us for the SIF process at each of the elementary buildings, we felt what a great opportunity this is to change this process, to provide our case managers a platform where they can talk about their student, what they've tried with their student, what their student's IUP goals are, and what they're still struggling with, and then partner with their special education colleagues at their building to come up with interventions to support our most struggling special education students. To get this process going, you see at the bottom bullet, we wrote that the model is aligned to MTSS. So before we rolled out the first round of steps to our teachers, we collaborated with Chris and Paulini, and they made sure that we're aligning our process to the district's revision of MTSS. And so while we cannot replicate work for work at MTSS, it's a general education initiative, as you all well know, we did take some of those processes and procedures that came through as recommended by Jim Wright, who know that the district had worked with and had helped revamp some of the MTSS processes. The key change for us has been that while through the MTSS process, a goal is created for the child based on their performance, through our SIF process, we said, why create a goal when the children already have goals on their IUC? So all of the work, all of the interventions, and all of the targets for the kids are designed completely around the goals that are on their IUC. And so the process for SIF, and there are four SIF days in each form of the elementary buildings, they're spaced out. And so at each SIF meeting, there are four days. Ahead of the meeting, two weeks, the case managers will think about which students on their case load are not being able to progress towards their IUP goal, which students are struggling to reach. They'll contact us and give them those, give us those students' names, and pull them up for them and create a data spreadsheet. And then at the SIF meeting, the case manager presents what the students' concerns are, what they have tried already, how they're performing compared to their class rates, and as well as compared to where they should be for their IUP goals. They present kind of the case and what they want to work. We follow the MTSS framework and Jim Wright's model and creating a problem identification statement as aligned to where the child should be at this point for their IUP goals versus where they are right now. And then we work together to identify a hypothesis around why the child is not achieving the goals. That helps us provide a clear compass and a direction for what we're exploring. We then dedicate about half of the time, we have 30 minutes allocated for each student's discussion, about 12 to 13 of those minutes is team collaboration. So let's say that we narrow the focus that a child is not able to, for example, maybe decode short run sentences, right? The teachers will then begin to brainstorm with each other different specific strategies that they've tried with other students who they have worked with in the past and what has not worked. We write all their notes down. Case manager then selects two of the top strategies that they would like to try with their student, progress monitors those over time, and then at the next round of SIF, presents on how the student has performed, has worked with any of those interventions, whether that has worked or not. This year, we are addressing academic issues for through our SIF process. So you know that many of our special education students struggle with academic needs, but there are some who also struggle with behavioral needs. We have made the decision not to address behavior this school year, but that is a piece that's coming for next year. And MTSS branches into focusing on behavior next year as well. So we've been aligned to what the district is doing that way. And so that kind of transitions pretty well over to what other ways of supporting behavior, and that is completely vulnerable.
So we, it was very apparent in the first month of self school, that we had some students who were really struggling to react to the general education setting and being in a classroom full time. You know, it's a big shift to go from four days to that excellent day break that they had last year. And we really knew that we needed to support behavior, but we weren't ready to do it through MTSS, and we weren't ready to do it through SIF. So we found our own method of reaching some of our youngest students in area behavior. And we use our research-based program called Zones of Regulation, which was developed by an occupational therapist who specializes in executive functioning and self-regulation. She then sold her program for $22,000 program on social thinking, and they now run trainings and develop materials applying to the program. But the focus is really quite simple in that all of us in this room, all students have emotions and feelings, and that's okay. But ideally, we want to stay in the blue zone most of the time, right? So as human beings, we know that we have to have social norms, and this program really focuses on the social norms of the classroom. The yellow zone is kind of our caution zone, where it's like, okay, to have a little bit of emotional, but too much is going to push you over and back, over somebody over my heart. So and then the blue zone is we have kids who are struggling, and they guide them. And our red zone is our angry kids. And the whole program focuses on, it's okay to have emotions in every zone, so long as you have working strategies to get you back to your baseline. And that's something that I really like about it, is that we're teaching kids that it's okay to feel that way, and hope how they feel, but then focus on giving yourself back to that area intimately and teaching them that they have power over their behavior. So what we've been doing is we've been highlighting weekly zones of regulation lesson in the ICT setting in fifth grade at Burnham. Kathy's always wonderful, welcomes us, and to be her partner. So I've been going over there and teaching weekly lessons with them. From there, I have offered asynchronous professional development at Zone for Regulation that will again be available over the summer, hopefully to more of our people who are more interested in bringing out to it. And then we've also ordered Zones of Regulation material for every grade level at all four of our elementary schools, in addition to all of our self contained classrooms. So in addition to that, we've built a library, a picture book, similar to what we do with our vector tax and our CRA tax, where people are going to be able to pull from those resources to start teaching their own zone classes in our classrooms. So our goal is to develop a schoolology course where everybody can go and pull from a basic lesson, and if their class struggled with this, they can then come and find who's going to tailor it to what the class feels like on a given day.
So as you can tell by our late evening enthusiasm, we're doing really wonderful things. And we are going to continue to focus on doing these wonderful things as we move into next year. So, you know, as the vote points say, we're going to continue to transition our classrooms up and look at more integrated coaching opportunities for our students. We're going to continue to work with Ellen on providing staff development for the integrated teaching, especially instruction. Working with Melon, the face school, on targeted interventions just for our students with the ability, along with any struggling students, who have lots of struggling students right now. We're going to consider the addition of our choice support to the consent level. We're going to continue to work on some targeted support for our consistent path, or referrals to special education, and really that pre-referral intervention process. Yes, students have a right to interventions in general education. You know, I'm always talking about what their rights are when they get to us, but they really have lots of rights prior to them getting to us. And really, the other pieces, Maria, working with the related service providers on level recognition for students who are related to them. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us and for having us here tonight. We really appreciate the time and the space.
Yeah, I'm kind of usually here at some point in time, how many students are we talking about right now that consider one of the special education ones?
Okay, I'm going to see right now.
Right. Are you seeing within the CPSE community, are you seeing an expansion of those numbers?
Yes.
So I guess my question is, with that continued expansion stuff, I know it's guessing very, very helpful having Intox in the program. Is that something that needs to be more permanent? It's, I notice you were saying Intox is supportive, and it's been a little of that secondary and 912?
No.
So those things to support, not only the CPSE side of it, but the growth in the program starts to almost through the grades and stuff. Where do you see this happening? I just, I can't, I don't see, there's four of you in over 500 students, plus the growth in the CPSE. So it just seems like an awful lot.
It's a lot. I, you know, right now, I think that part of that a lot has to do with the consequences of COVID. So I think a more on it to.
And the ICT is going into the high school next year.
Great.
How quickly do you see that transitioning into the rest of the world?
So one of the concepts that we made to shift our side when we made this decision was that we could do it slowly, thoughtfully. So we're not making any grand jumps, and we're taking that that way from that slowly, like through the middle of the trouble. But then this is a thing that at the elementary level, we are looking at people with students that have significant learning, and if the student needs warrants and ID, whether it's a cold weather or a bad cough, it's better to support students that we won't be able to make sense since the end of the day. Part of the professional development has been around helping teachers understand how to make those decisions around students. So it's not to say that in a first victim population, a grade enough couldn't be recommended for a less restricted setting. But our current setting is
Thanks. The only comment I, it's a positive comment, of course, because it's just amazing the world that all of us are doing. Our students here, it's about support. I agree, there are a lot of students that are struggling, students right now, some of them have to do with COVID. But I'm thinking back to your presentation last year, I remember you having a slide up there that said next steps for your department. I remember those things that we did next steps last year, I was so glad to hear about that one. So I'm looking at this rate now, processing that kind of, you're hearing the progress of what we plan on doing moving forward. Then really looking forward to see how all that ICT works going to state of the art over into next year. So thank you for that continuous improvement as we move forward in the special life. As we know, these are constantly changing. And with Zones of Regulation, I'm in grade right now, actually, you said in my building, so I'm very familiar with that, it really does. What we're seeing is students that need co-regulation are now starting with self-regulation because of that cohort, you know, we have so many students, especially younger workers, I'm sure we're getting that here in Spence for as well, that need co-regulation, you know, because of that. Because of this, there's going to be regulation that it is a self-regulation form. Hopefully that's what we see here moving forward. So, but thank you. Great information.
So excited every time guys are here to know what our students are getting. Someday I'll learn a number of things, everything it is that can do with, oh my God.
You're welcome to come to the teacher orientation where we go over all the actions.
Any further questions?
I really had you. I didn't see anything in the window. When I read this, there was one comment that you made about any couple of technology devices. The recording devices, I understood, the drones, a little difficult, because we do actually have some campus, which may be a little difficult to add, because it's unacceptable piece of technology.
Jonathan, can I just, I just want to make sure for our guests at home, if it should be on the screen?
Well, no, that's the next one. I do have this on the screen. There we go.
There we go. Yeah, so the seven and eight thousand series, now that everybody can see it. We do have some drones in a classroom that have been used for some things in instructional basis, as well as for skills, doing some actual drone related things. I don't know exactly what else they could do. They haven't been used very recently, I understand, but they have been in the past.
So the background of it, what was in the student technology section, there was unacceptable items in, talk about the AM stations. And one of the things that I raised a couple of points is the ability to remote recording, whether it's a small camera that can be placed somewhere that people would normally be recording, either video or audio. In the same line is drone or remote control devices where the camera can easily get to someplace where it wouldn't know that it's there. So I guess it's the word drone, kind of generically, that a device that can get a recording device somewhere else. So I've had construction sites where drones have popped up, where competitors are watching to see what's going on. So that's. So that led me into that statement with the drone. We typically drove to outdoors or but there could be a drone and at a window watching inside. That's where I was thinking of them.
Yes, and I think we can look at it as because it's if it is really geared with the right wording towards personal, student personal devices. So if a student brings a drone from home that doesn't have a hold from the principal or a teacher. I think we can categorize it that way so that it could be incorporated, but there are separate rules for New York State Public High School Athletic Association also issued rules a couple of years ago about fifty drones at sporting events. So we have those rules and a number of years ago, we had looked at a policy covering drones, but we had not moved on that policy. So I think incorporating that the right way. I think that was really the only policy I had a comment on. Try not to use those words, but if there are any other comments, I
So I had one that was put that I don't know what instruments can qualify. What I read today, I read as qualified students. You said it. Right. But I read it just drawing. I read it as the students.
Yes, there was, there was another policy that I had found of another that we could use to better verify that. It was really related to certain instruments, not certain students. And one of those large instruments that the district owns. Yeah, that was, I caught that.
So our goal is to get through all these by the end of this year of policies. And I appreciate what you did with the document that has a single and one of the things that I've got to be honest, that was so convenient. I read it from everything and rather than going back. I think that would have been a little bit more difficult to actually read it. Probably more people read it. Surprising there's less comments, but our real goal is to get everyone to read and understand all of those.
I can then continue that next time we have probably special education policies coming up and then a large group of seven and eight thousand series that are left. So hopefully will be done by then and then everything off the air for proceeds and a draft.
Will you be sending us more of your review prior to that?
Yes. Yes, I have to meet with Mr. Kesskutti one more time, I think, to a couple of them, and I'm still finishing up the largest bulk of policies.
Well, moving forward, we have next on our agenda, the ratification of the successor agreement, Spencer Court Teacher Association. I know that Jamie had provided you a summary letter. And so I open up the floor to any questions or any clarification that you might need from Jamie at this time.
I'm good. I didn't have any questions. I guess I would. I think I want to ask a little further and get in. We've received some emails about the nurses' side of this contract. So I think we, it warrants further discussion, not at this point, and it's not about the ratification, but I think we do, it warrants some additional questions and discussion about some of the items that were raised about the nurses' contract is being tied in with the teacher's contract. So it's just different items that seem to come up. And I just want to bring that up. I don't have any specific statements at this point, but I want to let the few people that have reached out to us know that, okay, it's not falling in deaf ears. So overall, I am
Yeah, no. So that being said, I mean, can we address, do something about it another time that you're thinking? Or is that something I should ask?
I know. I mean, I know Jamie's probably wondering what to talk about.
Yeah, the characters for the negotiation public, so.
Yeah, so we're not going to. Some of the nurses have sent emails to the board with questions about it and at this point, they mostly came today. I don't have enough information. So yes, something in the future, if, if something needs to be done, we can still memorandum of agreement or something, but should that be necessary? But I guess my point was to acknowledge that there are questions out here about this.
Yeah, well said.
Other than that, I want to share that I'm very pleased that they, we have a vote from the bargaining unit that they were pleased with the outcome of this and I too am happy, I guess. We're done. We're ready to go. We're ready to move forward and although the timeframe was longer than people may have wished for. Negotiations take time and we got to, I believe, a good place for for the teachers and for the district. So with that, any further comments? At this point, I'd like to hear a motion. Ratify successor agreement. Second, if you can take, all in favor? Is Leah still online? Or is it six oh?
Ms. Brown?
She raised her. That would be six oh. Congratulations. I'm excited for everybody.
Okay. Moving forward, the next item is the ratification of the successor agreement for Soma. Again, I know that Jamie had shared a summary letter to the board that they'd like to open it up if there's any questions.
Questions, no comments. Motion?
Make a motion to ratify the successor agreement.
It's a second, Mr. Kincaid, all in favor?
Ms. Brown?
Yep. Let me ask.
Six oh. Motion best. Federal stimulus update.
So it goes to the podium. This is an update that we wanted to provide to the board and are mandated to provide to the board in regards to our federal stimulus funding. How we're spending the money. As Rick and I have discussed, we thought it would be helpful to give context again to the board, what our original plan was, what some of those revisions have been along the way this year. And the continued use of the federal stimulus funding.
Thanks, Krista. So again, to Kristen's point, this is one of the assurances that we provided in the application. So that is a big reason why we're here to meet that obligation. I could probably start off with any questions.
Are you allowed to?
I don't have any good jokes either, so sorry.
Come on, Rick. You don't have any good accounting jokes?
I don't. I think we got thirty minutes. Here we go. Thank you. Okay, so just a quick refresher. The last time we provided an update was back in August twenty one. So in March of twenty, we had the coronavirus aid relief and economic security with the CARES Act. Broken down into two different grants. One is the governor's emergency education relief or the GEAR fund. The other is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, commonly referred to as the ESSR. December of twenty, they came out to what I commonly refer to as the CERSA Act or coronavirus response relief supplemental appropriations. Again, broken down into two different grants, GEAR and ESSR. And then in March of twenty one, they had the American Rescue Plan, which again was really more of the ESSR portion, but you will see that they've allocated that into the ninety, what they call the ninety percent allocation in the state reserve. There's actually four different grant numbers that we have to manage. This slide is sharing with you the big picture of when the funding became available. So for each one, it was March thirteenth of twenty twenty. For the CARES Act, you can see that the end date is coming up soon. The total amount of that grant was six hundred and eleven thousand. And again, remember that that was under our general aid, state aid portion. And you can see that we had an approval date of our second twenty twenty one. The second stimulus package, the CERSA, again, went back to the twenty, March thirteenth. That ends as far as availability a year after the CARES Act. You can see in total it was three point three million, broken down separately into the two different sub-brands. The R Act goes out a year after that, so September of twenty twenty four. Total it was four point nine, four million of that was related to the ninety percent allocation. Nine hundred and four was for the state reserve and we'll get into a little bit more depth of that in the upcoming slides. I will share the approval date for the ninety percent was relatively recently. Went back and forth quite a while, but we finally get it approved and same as the state reserve. So I just wanted to share a little bit with you because the CARES Act is for the most part done. This is what the initial budget was for. Just like the general fund budget, as things happen throughout this time period, there's things that you may have budgeted for that don't occur or vice versa. So what you can see here on my right is what had happened. The GEAR portion was pretty much in line with what we wanted to do. The ESSR portion, you can see that there was a decrease in the professional salaries and an increase in the purchase service. So what the business office did was submit what they call an FS ten A, which is an amendment, which eventually got approved by the grants finance office where we had to allocate money from and take it from the salaries and put that into purchase service. So you can see that change. This is preliminary, but we're going to be pretty much right on and use all of that funding. So this will be submitted prior to the due date, which is in October of twenty two. Any questions as it relates to the CARES Act? Okay, for the CERSA, again, just as a refresher, this was our initial budget under the GEAR. The types of expenses that we've allocated to that, we've assigned to teachers on special assignment, their related benefits and administrative costs is a direct correlation to the indirect cost. The ESSR portion, again, of three point one million. You can see this is much of what, actually, I take that back. Things that we've done here, we included the foreign enrichment specialists. Added two elementary teachers that was enrollment driven and you can see the other areas or types of expenses that were incurred. Any questions on the CERSA?
Hey, Rick, so we're in year two of this right now or year one?
I would probably, you could say either or, Dave, quite honestly, because of the timeline in which it was approved. It was approved in this year, but because you can go back to the March of twenty twenty, we've incurred some expenses that are already been, have been applied to this. Any other questions on the CERSA? Okay, so for the R Act, this is the ninety percent allocation. This was one federal grant number. You can see it was four million dollars. These are the items that we've provided additional information and that in the past where this includes the four NTSS toses. You saw Bree tonight as our K five special education tosa. This is where we're handling the backfill positions for the content focus coaches and the majority of other items. I don't know if I can do it through each bullet point. Do you have any questions as it relates to those items related to the ninety percent allocation? One thing that you haven't really been providing an update on is the state reserve allocation. So again, it was nine hundred and four thousand dollars. And what they're really asking you to do is identify three specific areas that you need to address. One is not less than five percent to address the academic impact of lost instructional time. The second is not less than one percent for evidence-based summer enrichment programs. And the last is not less than one percent for evidence-based comprehensive after-school programs. So just a little bit about those. For the five percent lost instructional time, you can see that we're including a five-week K one summer program commonly referred to as our jump and leap to address the early intervention of literacy and numeracy. We are in the process of creating a four-school math workshop for our fourth and fifth grade students at each elementary school. Currently in the process of a six-twelve summer program. And we've identified the potential for staffing to address class size based on movement tracks. Any questions as it relates to lost instructional time? As it relates to the after-school program, again, we've looked at providing academic support in all four core areas in grade six, eight, nine, twelve. Again, it's a matter of just identifying tie ties work with how to determine the metrics. Any questions on the after-school? Similar fashion for the summer learning. We have a program called the Summer Academy to provide targeted intervention. Again, five-week program, we've run this in the past, we're using stimulus funds to help fund that program. Any questions on summer learning? Okay, amendments and next steps. As I mentioned, there's a fluidity to these grants. So as things come up, as Ty. As he works with building principles and instructional team to identify different metrics. We can make changes, but you can already already know that we've made some changes to what was originally budgeted for as it relates to being able to retain and attract staff. I don't want to speak behalf of the code response team, but one of the takeaways I interpreted was that the concern for social emotional. As they move forward. So again, we have an opportunity to look at these metrics, analyze things that are happening in the buildings. And make changes to those grants to address that these particular needs. Again, as we look at the different metrics for academics, they can make changes for lost instructional time. Professional development is an area, again, that we may need to look into. Contractual services as an example. We actually are having a difficult time hiring psychologists, so we've had to contract that out. That's an example that was an unbudgeted expense that we are now shifting from one area to another to address that particular need. And I listed just some additional materials and supplies, again, that we've already run into. Laptops, additional laptops, if we had to make that switch in the event that. You know, we went full remote screens at Burnaby so that we can work on the air filtration, even paper. With the supply and demand, we get our paper through the Bosie's co-op bid. That vendor had to withdraw from that, so we were actually in a paper shortage. Quite honestly, so we diverted that. To me, that's a director of the code respect expense rather. And you can see some of the other items there. So really. That's a very quick rundown of where we stand in our federal stimulus funding. Any questions?
Yeah, can you address kind of what your thinking is? And I know it's not, you know, all put in stone yet, but where are we going? You know, with these great programs that are being put in place, the summer learning, the, you know, the math tutoring. How does that get sustained when this stuff runs out?
Well, I mean, that's a big, that's a big question, right, Gary? It's the fiscal cliff that the federal government, the state government, local government have. Identified as districts to be careful because when this money runs out, what are we going to do? So I think in previous presentations, you talked about the CSS, the content focus coaches. That's supposed to build capacity. Okay, and, you know, for those backfill positions as the years progress throughout this period of time, we're going to have. Retirements that we can hopefully fill those so that we're not adding additional staff. We've really looked at trying to identify one-time expenses, the initial budgets that I shared with you, that's. Was really the focus, but obviously you know we've had to turn on dime a little bit to address quite a few different areas to retain and attract staff. That's going to be a legacy cost that we're going to have to manage. Some of the other programs, again, we are, you know, much of those, the summer programs are in our general fund budget. So we've diverted some money as a temporary relief to address some of those other items that have come up. So this is really, as I mentioned before, it's a fluid process. And the fortunate thing is we have until September of twenty three, September of twenty four. Really to address these as we go through our budget development process.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
It's definitely in the forefront of our mind, because we know at some point this money runs out and we have to maintain the progress that. We're accustomed to.
Okay.
Hey, Gary, if I could just add, we're also looking closely at our data to really understand what the learning loss is. So for example, at the elementary level, Ty and I were having conversations that. The students might be recovering well academically, but what we're finding is their readiness to learn, their social emotional needs. And so then, you know, when Rick talks about the fluidity, we start thinking differently about our summer program. Is there something that we could do that helps those very young learners who are doing okay academically, but it's just their social emotional readiness? And do we target that? And might that just be a short-term need that we have? As students come back into our system in a more typical way.
Okay, thanks. Last, I just want to share again as part of assurance. Please note that the completed application, the budget narratives that explain the detail behind the budget numbers. When that is all posted on our website, there is an email there for if the community members or staff, anyone has questions. Or suggestions, they should email us and we can address those.
Rick, you know, when Gary asked that question, you responded with that fiscal cliff and. What I think about is all the work that we continue to do to think about long-term financial planning. And we're going to continue to need to get these updates and really closely monitor what are our priorities? And in regards to, you know, the academic growth, the social emotional growth, and we're going to have to continue to monitor. How students are doing and what we need to provide for them. Because we're going with not knowing where we're going to be in a couple of years with this money, we're going to have to really prioritize. And make some big decisions. So I think. We have to continue to closely monitor needs of students and what we need to provide them. And really take a look at what our priorities are going to be based on that. And we need to continue to have updates like this. So that when we do make decisions that are going to impact our future, we're making decisions that are going to keep us in a real sound fiscal health. Yeah, I continue to think about, you know, all this money that we've received, using it and we're using it in great ways and we're seeing results. But at the same time, not forget about that long-term financial plan, where are our priorities to make sure we stay financially healthy as we move forward?
Hundred percent agree.
All right, thanks, Rick. Meeting evaluation.
Still, I've got to see lots of kids.
Have to see lots of kids and I love that. A lot of great reports tonight. It was good to get caught up on some of the work that's been done. This year and getting those reports from various groups and having the students here, that bright spot was awesome. Thank you, Rick, for not taking the thirty minutes that was allotted for that conversation. But very important to have all that information coming. So with that.
This time, electric motion for the board to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment and employment history of particular persons.
Okay. With that. Second. Roberto, all in favor?
Ms. Brown?
Yeah, I may ask.
Thank you.
Let's call you.